Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Where everyone please remains standing. I want to ask Pastor Harris to come and give us a prayer, please.
Eternal God our Father, the God of justice and mercy, we thank you, Father, because you are the giver of all life. We come now, oh God, because of your goodness and your grace that you have blessed us with this day. Father God, we thank you for these elected officials. We thank you for the community. Father, I pray that the gap will be bridged together where we can discuss old and new business. And knowing that, God, that the decisions we make today may impact those of the present time and those who are to come. So Father God, we pray that we will make sound and wise decisions and that we will do our due diligence, oh God. So bless us in such a way that all that we do may be in order to your glory, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Watley.
Present.
Councilwoman, Councilman Oden.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present and we do have a quorum tonight.
Good, great. Um, everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? Any additions, deletions? Announcements?
Under consent.
Okay, yeah, under consent. Anything about tonight's agenda? Need to add anything?
It's not convenient to add on the, oh, to the contract.
To D, item D, the number, ma'am?
Um. No, the, uh, out clause.
Oh, true. When that motion is made, just add that clause. Okay. Uh, we have a motion to approve the agenda? A move?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Presentation, Inkster Beautification Presentation, Ms. Toni Bailey. And friends.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Good evening.
They've been in towards you.
Okay.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Hmm.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Council, Treasurer, City Clerk, Department Heads, those in the audience and those viewing. Way before you, we want to recognize, um, the beautification that has been going on, our spring, summer cleanup. Those who sponsor, ship, uh, the volunteers in our beautification awards. I want to introduce other members of the beautification. Everybody knows Gabe Henderson. We have, um, Ms. Kathleen Gibbs. We also have a council liaison, you know, that's part of beautification, that's Councilwoman Watley. And we also have, uh, two former members, they volunteers, Reverend George Williams and Levania Henderson, so if we need them to do something, they are available. Okay, first of all, we want to start out with, uh, the sponsorship. We want to recognize, um, David W. Jones, Esquire with the Allen Brothers, who help out, um, um, with the goodies that we have with our kickout, and we appreciate it that much. We appreciate it very much, and we won't have him squeezed through, you know, to come up, so Gabe gonna bring him his certificate. Also, another certificate of appreciation, uh, is awarded to Brad Delinsky of Granger's of Romulus, Michigan. He's not here, um, he wasn't able to be here, but I will see to it that he gets his certificate. Moving on, we want to start with our volunteers. Let's see. Volunteer Certificate of Appreciation presented to Carl Woods in recognition and appreciation of your service to the City of Inkster Annual Spring/Summer Cleanup 2017. We want to recognize, um, with the eye candy, he's like the cleanup coordinator. So not only doing the, uh, spring, summer clean, he also go through the fall and winter months, you know, going cleaning up and part of the cleanup coalition, you know, the different dump sites where people dump, you know, cleaning up that area. So we appreciate, you know, what he's doing, you know, we want to keep Inkster beautiful. So we want to present this to Mr. Carl Woods.
Toni, can this be a little softer?
Okay, um, I just want people to know, like I tell you all the time, he's my garbage guru, okay? And he has paid out of his own pocket for the use of equipment that we use when we have big dump sites. And this is not just, you know, fifty bucks, like two hundred dollars every time he does it, and he's done it quite a few times. So he not only gives his time and energy, he also spends his money. And like people say, put your money where your mouth is, okay? And I want to thank him personally.
I'm very happy to receive this award from the Beautification Committee, but I'd be remiss if I didn't give recognition to the other people that were involved in this endeavor. There were several. First of all, these two young men behind me, they're my crew. Emmanuel Pitts and Adrian Pitts, they live in Inkster, and they appreciate, uh, what they've done too, and we, I appreciate it. In fact, they helped me, uh, various things they helped me with. I also like to recognize, um, Councilwoman Watley. She was my, uh, like partner. Getting all the people together and whatnot, you know, and, uh, then I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention our own Jerome Bivens. He's the one that, without his cooperation, I wouldn't have been able to do what we did. He made sure we had the dumpsters that were strategically placed by his, um, able superintendent, Bud Avery. My hat goes out to him, you know. Now, during this period of time, we picked up mattresses, automobile parts, barrels, couches, carpeting, broken concrete, stumps, shingles, roofing shingles, you know. And Cherry Hill was a one mess, you know. We had to go down there about four times to get that cleaned up. We had to do two dumpsters at one spot at, uh, with the, somebody was dumping, um, uh, shingles in there, you know. The other one I like to recognize is, um, Gabba's Concrete. They were gracious enough to give me a fifteen, fifty percent discount on their loader with the grapple bucket so we could handle this stuff. So this was no, just no easy job, you know, this was an adventure. So, uh, if there's anybody I, I missed, I'll give you my apologies now, you know. And again, I thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, the next one that we want to, uh, present a certificate of appreciation to, um, is the AKA in their recognition of what they did of planting, um, flowers up at the, um, Boca Dozier Rec Center around the Marquee. So, uh, we appreciate that much, that they were doing their part, you know, to beautify the city as well. Sonia Jackson, the coordinator, she was not able to be here, but I know, uh, some of the staff is here. The President. Okay, the next, uh, certificate of appreciation is to Starfish Family Services. Um, in August, um, they will adopt Middlebelt and they will clean it up real nice from Michigan Avenue North all the way up to Cherry Hill, and we appreciate that much, you know, this year and last year. Carol needs to accept the certificate.
Thank you.
Okay, the next goes to volunteer is to Ms. Denise Palmer. She not only just do on Middlebelt, you know, south of, uh, Michigan Avenue, but she do around the city as well. Not doing just our cleanup time, but she just be cleaning all the time, and we appreciate that very much. So, um, Ms. Palmer, if you want to come up. The last volunteer is Bernice Bankhead. Um, I don't see her here tonight. Um, she would, uh, come out and volunteer during the cleanup time, and then she sometime have when her daughter is up in town, her granddaughter, she'll bring her to help, you know, clean up the different areas. She has a pickup truck and she be picking up different stuff and bringing them to the dumpsters, and we appreciate that very much. I will see to it that she receives her certificate. Now we want to go to our beautification awards, those who've been nominated. First, we want to start out with Ms. Marion Allen. She told me what her age is. She can say what her age is when she come up, but, you know, I want to see her all the time out there cleaning in her yard, you know, cutting, trimming the hedges, front and back, and we appreciate that very much.
Toni, 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 can I get a picture real quick, because I'll be in trouble with Father Cliff if I don't?
You didn't get the memo.
I'm crazy.
Somebody get out there and take the pictures, please.
Okay, we have Ms. Denise Brown Tatum. I don't think she's here. Mr. Brown said, um, Mr. Tatum said they might not be able to make it, but I'll, I told him I'll see to it that they receive their certificate. The next is the Applewood Coney Island was nominated, um, and also, um, Galani Dental Center was, uh, nominated. Uh, Dr. Galani, she couldn't be able to be here, so the mayor's gonna accept her certificates in her absence.
Two?
Yes, Applewood's and.
Extra beautiful.
Can I, can I say something?
Well, yeah.
I want to say, uh, hello again, ma'am, you know, this was, you know, James Brown hardworking man, children, this hardworking lady that I know and things that she do for the City of Inkster, and I want to say, you know, and she keep me on my toes, the things that I know will help out. When I for her, I, you know, I'd be lost a lot, thank you. She hardworking, she got a job, I'm retired. We blessed to have. We are. Yeah, I've seen a lot of organizations doing a lot of this and that, be proud of.
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Okay, before I sit down, I also want to announce that beautification, we added on, uh, fall cleanup. We know I'm just do spring to summer, but we added on fall, October and November. So the cleanup will be, um, the last Saturday of this month, October twenty-eighth, and November will be, um, the eighteenth. Um, we will only have two locations of the dumpsters, um, Boca Dozier and Wheatley Park. Those will be the only two, um, dumpster locations. And that's about it. Any questions? Thank you, everyone. Keep Inkster beautiful.
All right, next we have Wayne County Commissioner Anderson come up. You have any updates for us?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council and, and Department Heads. I just wanted to, uh, very quickly, uh, thank, uh, our DPS Director Bivens, uh, for his involvement. And I was able to get the county and some other folks to come out to look at the sidewalk issue on the west side of Inkster Road. And, uh, what we're hoping to do is get a sidewalk down through there from the high rise all the way to the other end to Colonial. And, um, it's, it's a work in progress. We're waiting to get an estimate back of what the cost would be and to see how we can find the funding for it, so I'm hopeful we can do that. And I did on the way in, drive in, uh, coming down Inkster Road and crossing Cherry Hill, and it was really nice to see the, uh, the intersection lit up like it was with the new lights. And, uh, Mr. Bivens, earlier at the start of the meeting, you said it had been how many years since you'd been trying to get this done? Four years? And, uh, and I'm really proud of the fact that we all worked together and was able to, to make that come to fruition. And, uh, and I appreciate Councilman Chisholm sending me the, the, uh, the text message with the photograph when he saw the lights were up working and, uh, even before I did, and I, mind you, I've been watching it. And I am surprised, I wanted to give, uh, credit to the DPS Department for the county, uh, for getting the lights up as quick as they did. I, I think when I was here earlier and said that we'd reached an agreement to get those lights up, uh, I didn't expect it to be until spring or summer of next year. And lo and behold, it, uh, Wayne County does occasionally move quickly. Thank you all. And, and I, I just wanted to say, you know, sitting here in the audience, and it's always, it has always been an honor in the short time that I've represented Inkster to see the fine people that live in Inkster. And we should always, I think, remember that, uh, and I, and I know you do. But I think everyone outside of Inkster needs to realize what a great bunch of people live in Inkster. And just people that give of themselves and give and give and give to make the community better, to make it better every day. And, uh, and just what we saw just a few minutes ago, Gabe is, and there's many, many more, sorry, don't get mad at me, but I see Gabe picking up trash everywhere. I see him doing things, just, just taking that extra little effort to make the city, uh, more beautiful place. And Inkster's on the rise, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, ever had a chance to consider agenda, looked at the minutes?
Now's the time.
It's your time.
Okay, I just, uh, wanted to say a friendly amendment, um, because the announcements I had at the last council meeting did not appear in the, um, agenda, which was to Advisory Board Meeting on the twenty-sixth. And then I think I mentioned about the eye candy convoy, and I really can't remember the third. But there were three of them, so, um, I wanted to make sure those got in there. I'll be announcing again tonight, but that would be a correction.
Anything else? Any changes, additions, have a motion?
Make a motion to accept that you consider agenda?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Boards and Commissions, have anything left over to vote from last time?
Um, we had George Mitchell and Opal Nolan to the Parks and Rec, yeah, she commissioned.
She can't be out? Oh, we had, yeah, yeah, yeah. We had, uh, Opal Nolan to Parks and Rec was nominated by someone, it was not me. And it was, George Mitchell was nominated also a historical commissioner. So, uh, I think, uh, David Jones read us the rules. Basically, we can override the, uh, nepotism clause of the Charter if we choose to, if we believe the city needs that person to serve. So, uh, do we have, uh, I guess, which one you want to vote on first? Do we need another motion? Yeah, we need a motion on the first one. Somebody want to, who, who appointed Opal Nolan last time? Hold on, did y'all get a resume and stuff? I didn't receive any of those papers. So we can't vote on that one. Um, what about the next one, George Mitchell?
I said that sometime.
We had his, we had his for a long time, right? Okay, do we have a motion on that?
A move.
Report.
Okay, proper move, supported, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Any current nominations for anything else?
We knew we have an issue with, with Mayor Pro Tem. Did he nominate himself last year? Not that I, not that I want to put him on blast, anything.
And we, there was some discussion about that. Do you, do you want to renew your nomination of yourself?
No, but I want to, I want to say something. It seems though, well, no follow-up interview appeared that you just didn't know that when you're going to nominate someone by district, uh, the person that's nominated should nominate someone from their district. And what we've been doing, just to nominate people, and the clerk should look at it and says, and see where they live and put them over there.
Right.
Um, um, there's a person that's in my district right now, I don't know who that person is, I was, I didn't appoint them. At this point, I'm going to try to be the bigger person, let it stay on there, let, let, because we do need the citizens to be involved and let them serve. But I think in the future, we need to look at that, uh, if you're going to appoint someone, make sure that they're in your district.
Okay. Any other nominations, Boards and Commissions?
I have a question now. Uh, regarding that, not all Boards and Commission lists show, uh, districts. So are you saying that every Board and Commission should show someone from the first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth district? Because that's not the case.
Well, they do have here, well, on the list on which ones that should be by district.
Yeah, certain ones.
There are some that, there are some people at the legal board, um, some of them still don't even live in the city of Inkster.
The wood board?
Oh, but not legal board, it's the, uh, condemnation board, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, every board is, is different.
Right. So that's why I'm saying it can't be a blanket, you must.
Right.
Have to go by what is required for each commission.
Anything else on Boards and Commissions? Okay, move on down.
Oh, I'm sorry, but, but, uh, with the cable commission, um, when I, I was, I used to be the chairman of the cable commission, and when I got elected, I immediately became an ex officio. I'm not sure with council people being on these commissions, but there should be a large or, or ex officio, I think we should, we should look into that.
Can you check into that?
He needs to be an ex officio, so that's enough.
That's what I like to be ex officio, um, to the Parkers Commission.
You used to be on it?
No.
The only person that would be, yeah, ex officio would be the mayor, not the Mayor Pro Tem.
Where'd you, where'd you read that, reading that from?
Well, that's, that's the way it's done. The president of an organization is always the officio, ex officio member of a committee. So any ex officio of any commission would be Mayor Nolan, not Mayor Pro Tem.
But that's not how it really went on the list up. It doesn't, it doesn't specify the person who was the ex officio.
Well, the specification should have been there, because that's actually the way any well-run organization is operated.
Well, that's something we will have to look up then.
Right.
It's all news to me. All right, well, we learned something new tonight. Do we have, John Conyers office, do you have anything, any updates, anything for us?
On the eighteenth of November, Congress will be hosting a Veterans Resource Fair. Uh, it's going to be at Pequette Square from women until two o'clock in the afternoon. We'll be working with veterans.
And tell them your name.
Good evening. My name's Larry Arregine, and I'm here on behalf of Congressman John Conyers. And as I was mentioning on, uh, the eighteenth of November, we'll be hosting a Veterans Resource Fair, uh, Pequette Square in Detroit. I'll send over some flyers, um, to inform the residents here of Inkster. We're hopeful that, uh, we'll be able to assist veterans that are present with a number of different issues that they may have with the VA, um, and reward them, um, as, as they've done, good and great service for us. I continue to, to encourage residents of the City of Inkster to, um, visit our Westland Office, uh, which is nearby. We take, intake, um, casework, um, every day. The office is, is open from nine o'clock in the morning till five o'clock. I noticed that the new boards, uh, which are great, um, if I could, um, I'd love to, to, to send over more information about some of the activities that we're doing, so that you can also share that with the residents as well.
Sure.
But I thank you for allowing me to share some information.
No problem, anytime.
I have a question. I have, in the last few months, uh, called your office, sent an email.
Okay.
Requesting that, uh, Mr. Conyers come to Inkster to hold a meeting like he does in his other areas of his constituency.
Yes.
I have not had the pleasure of a reply.
Well, um, I know, um, our schedule is sincere here, it handles those requests, and, um, we have had some things on the, the calendar, uh, that we were hoping to do, and, um, I'll share that with, uh, the Chief of Staff. Ray Plowton's in the office this week, um, as well as, um, the Deputy Chief and District Director Yolanda Lipsy, um, to see if, if we can, in the very near future, come out and make a visit to, uh, the City of Inkster.
I'm gonna give you my card.
Absolutely.
Because we want to be recognized, this is very important constituents also.
Thank you.
All right, all right, thank you.
Could you mention the times again for the Veterans Resource?
Yeah, it's going to take, again, it's going to be the, the eighteenth of November, from eleven AM to two PM in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thanks, Larry. Okay, on to new business.
Consider approval of an offer to purchase five vacant commercial parcels on Cherry Street, as duly noted, to Harlan Howard, for the total amount of seventy-two thousand.
Do you have a motion? Or move? Support, been properly moved and supported, discussion?
Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Chair, I just, I know our protocol as far as selling property, but in, in our study session, you said that we have four conservation centers, and this is what he's trying to do if the planning commission approves that, right?
Yeah, but I might, actually, I have never talked to him about it, so I don't know what he's actually trying, he might be doing processing.
Well, it's on, it's on, it's on, it's, it says on the, on the agenda that he's, uh, conservation, and I just want to know, how many are we going to have in the city of Inkster?
It's up to us.
Up to you, up to the planning commission and up to us.
No, 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 it's up to council, because they have to come to us on special conditions use.
Okay, but this is the, but this is the use intent.
That's what I understand.
But this deal right here, okay.
Medical marijuana.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Is this going to be a processing plant?
I'm not sure.
I'm looking at his, uh, uh, application to purchase city-owned property.
What does it say?
It just says summary of proposed use medical marijuana.
It's going to be cultivation, processing, and test.
Any other questions?
I have one question, um, looking at the comps, um, we could have got more money for it.
I think this, per acre, I think this is the highest amount, oh, second highest amount that we received on the land we sold in the last year.
Right.
Next door, we sold three acres next door to us for seventy-five thousand. This comes out to what, about twelve thousand dollars an acre? That's much higher than we sold the Henry Rough property, that was fifty-seven hundred an acre. So, it, when you look at comps from other cities, they're not necessarily comparable. Commercial property is tricky, it's not that easy. Just look at the house next door, it's, it's a different analysis. But remember, this land has been wasteland for us, I mean, garbage dumping, nothing is going on there. No business over the last million years has come to us and asked us to buy this land. So, whether we, uh, agree with the, the facility when it comes to us, that's one thing, but for us to not to sell it for seventy-two thousand dollars when no one wants it, that may not be smart.
Well, let me ask, on item seven, which says Michigan Avenue Henry Rough vacant, vacant land for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, how much land, how many acres was that?
What you talking about?
On the comp page?
I mean, I don't, I ain't looking at the comp page, what are you talking about?
Okay, but in Inkster, somebody bought some vacant land, and they paid seven hundred thousand dollars, so, so how many, how many acres did we buy? You know, for the, I, this is my personal opinion, for, for, uh, what they're buying the land for, for the use, they're going to make a lot of money, and what we're getting for it, fraction of what's going to be made.
I mean, the only thing we can do is if you, we want to go into that business, we can build a facility and do it ourselves, but we can't base what we sell.
We can't do that.
We, we can't base what, what we, what they're going to do on how much we sell the land for. Either we think it's good value to sell it for this price, or not. If you think we can get more, I'm all for it, I mean, we're not selling to this guy, but I didn't see anybody, no one else has made an offer on this particular land, thus far at least. Uh, I got a question on the document itself. Talked seventy-two thousand and council request for action. Go to the next page to forty-six, got seventy-one thousand. It needs to be read.
Are you talking your mic, uh, councilman?
The, the actual action item, um, speaks to the balance, he's put down a one thousand dollar deposit, so there is a remaining balance of seventy-one thousand dollars.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye? All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails.
Consider approval of an offer to purchase two vacant residential parcels located on the east side of Isabel Street, between Carlisle Street and Beach Street, as lea, as legally and duly noted.
Did you hear more than three names? I heard, I heard a chorus from this side, I didn't hear anything from the other side. Are you good with the voting, man?
If somebody called a roll call.
Roll call, yeah. I just want to be sure.
Cause I only heard two. Councilman Chinsel?
Nay.
Mayor Proton Williams?
Nay.
Councilwoman Howard?
Nay.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Nay.
Councilman Oden? Councilwoman Wiley?
Yes.
Okay.
We, you know, we do have, right, we do have a problem with, you know, people voting.
If you don't say anything, you're considered to say yes, please tell people that.
Okay.
All right, this, this, oh, pause, Dan, gotta clear that up. You want me to continue?
You keep going, the next one.
Consider approval of an offer to purchase two vacant residential parcels located on the east side of Isabel Street, between Carlisle Street and Beach Street, as duly noted, in the amount of one thousand five hundred dollars to Spring Hill Baptist Church, and, um, is the street Isabel Street still?
Yes.
It is, okay, all right.
No move?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Consideration and approval of a new contract with WCA assessing with the amendment of, of termination clause for convenience.
No movement, Chair?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion? Did you hear four? I heard one nay.
I didn't hear anybody that heard four.
Okay, motion passes.
Consideration and approval for equipment for Parkwood Park in the amount of forty-four thousand one seventy-four.
No movement, Chair?
Report.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. All the participat, participation. Andrea Lebo. Thought she was walking out.
Good evening, everyone, mayor, council, citizens. Um, so, just want to reiterate that Friday, October twentieth, this Friday, we will be having a fundraising fish fry at the Booker Doze Recreation Complex, twenty-twenty-five Middle Belt, it's going to be ten dollars a plate, you can either dine in with us or carry out, either take some lunch home, or take dinner home to the family, uh, one hundred percent of the proceeds will benefit activities through IPAL, and call me if you have any questions, my number is three one three two zero three twenty-two oh nine. Secondly, um, October's movie night was an absolute success, it was so much fun, um, we had an amazing amount of volunteers, we probably had the most people show up yet, we had probably over two hundred people there, we gave away four bikes that were donated, as well as about sixty other gifts, it was really, really great to see the kids get so excited with the raffle and everything, it was, it was an awesome night, and I'm grateful to have, uh, I guess, closed out the movie nights well. But, that's not all, um, keep an eye on our department's Facebook page, we're going to be planning all kinds of fun stuff for the winter, and, uh, just, um, stick with us, check us out on Facebook, Inkster Police, our Facebook dot com slash Inkster Police, thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Williams?
Greetings and good evening, mayor, city council, members of the Inkster community, and to all of you this evening. My name is Jennifer Williams, and I'm here representing the Inkster Task Force and Operation Refuge, the Inkster Task Force Education Committee is excited and pleased to announce a college student care package program. The program is designed to help college students from Inkster know that we applaud their desire to better educate themselves by providing a small box of love from their hometown. Many times, college students have difficulties that impede their success, anxiety, hunger, because caf, the cafeteria is closed, the food isn't good, missing the comforts of home, loneliness, and pressures to succeed academically, and overwhelm, overwhelming debt can derail the best intentions. So, what is a college care package party? It is a party for parents of college students to get together, bring items for care packages that will be sent to each student represented. Care packages are the perfect way to say I love you, I'm thinking about you, when you want to celebrate your student's birthday who might not be home, show your support during midterms and finals, a care package helps brid, bridge those miles. So, at this time, um, again, with, um, Operation Refuge and the, um, Education Committee of the Inkster Task Force, we are looking to kick off our first College Care Club Party, which will take place in November. The theme is pick, pack, eat, and ship. So, each care package, um, will, um, circle will consist of ten to fifteen parents or, um, loved ones with individuals who have students in college, you will bring ten or fifteen different items, depending on the size of your circle, and it's almost like a, um, if you will, a cookie exchange. So, you bring fifteen items, you'll put those out on the table, everyone else in your circle will bring fifteen items, put that out on the table, and you'll take one item from, of, that was brought from each person or representative there. You go home with your package of fifteen items from other people that are in your circle, you send your care package off to your student, you have a good time, you have some snacks and things of that nature. So, if anyone is interested in being part of the, um, College Care Package Circle, please feel free to contact me, I do have a flyer and some information and application, also look for more specific details on the first event on either the Inkster Task Force Facebook page, Operation Refuge Facebook page, Mother's Pantry Facebook page, and Camp Inspire's Facebook page. And that's it for me, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Rochelle Wells?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor Nolan, all council members, and, um, you out in the audience. I come before you on behalf of the Inkster Good Fellows, you know what time it is, pancake time, and I do have tickets for all of you that don't have them. Uh, some of you do have the tickets, the Pancake Breakfast is going to be Saturday at, uh, the Recreation Comp, the Dozier, uh, tickets are ten dollars, they haven't been raised, the price has not been raised for several years, we're going to have a really nice breakfast, of course, you're going to eat all the pancakes you want, but there's going to be trimmings with that breakfast, you know, the eggs, not the eggs, though, sausage, the bacon, the grits, um, a soft, the pancakes, everything that goes with it. So, we're hoping that everyone would come out, support the Good Fellows, no child without a Christmas is our theme as always. I do have tickets, and, um, there are members in the audience, would you stand and let them see you, so that if I run out, they can get you, and get a ticket from you, those that are in the Good Fellows here tonight. The man?
Oh, God, Mayor, they just be giving you the.
The man? Look, who is the man? It's the mayor. Who is the man? Okay, that settles it all then, but I guess my little tickets don't mean anything, Mayor, you, you got it then, okay, all right, I thank you all very much, and remember, our paper drive is the first Friday in December, um, look for that paper to be out, and if you solicit an ad in the paper, be sure to look for that ad, it's going to be great. Thank you so very much.
All right, thank you. All right, we got, Madam Clerk?
That's all the public participation we ask. I would just like to encourage any resident that is in, um, District One or District Two to get your absentee ballots, um, for the Romulus and Taylor School District Consolidated Special Election, um, and I think that's about it, thank you.
Oh, you want to tell them about the absentee drive?
I'm sorry, three in one. Um, myself, um, Yolanda Holmes, which is my deputy clerk, and Councilwoman Wat, Wiley, we did a, um, absentee voter drive at Thompson Towers on last Friday, and I believe we received, um, about fifty, um, registered voters who signed up for their AV, um, applications. So, we plan on doing this, um, every, going, going to a different location every month to either have them register to vote, or, um, if there is an election, to sign up for, um, absentee ballots. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Karen?
Just one announcement, uh, as many of you will recall, last year, we got awarded a grant for upgrading of the streetlights, uh, many of the streetlights across the city to the, um, LED, uh, uh, bulbs, we've started installing those, so you should start seeing the, um, new lights all across the city, and we hope over the next few weeks, uh, months, that that project will be completed, but you'll start seeing, uh, you should have already began seeing, um, the installation of the new, new lights, streetlights across the city.
Okay, see, Councilman Oden?
Thank you, Mayor. Want all the citizens to know that, uh, the thirtieth of this month, citizen district advisory committees from each district be meeting here, I believe it's here at the City Hall. Also, uh, I want to thank Commissioner Anderson for the light, Inkster Road and Cherry Hill, it's made a, it's made a great difference, so I want to thank you for that, that's all that I have.
Six o'clock.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Wiley?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would like to announce that the District Three Advisory Meeting will be October twenty-sixth at five PM at the Inkster Fire Department, and there will be, uh, interacting with the, uh, firemen and discussing process and procedure, when you call the Fire Department and any other thing you would like to discuss at that time. We will also be having another advisory meeting in November, that one will be at Thompson Towers at five o'clock on Wednesday, November seventeenth. These have been put on the cable channel as well as the website, so you can look that up if you wish to. Also, on, uh, Halloween, October thirty-first, I think it's a Tuesday this year, we're going to be having our Eye Candy Convoy, remember, that's where Eye Can gets in their cars, and they go to the establishments or the residence, or the, um, complexes of children who don't have the transportation to go to, uh, wherever the party is this year, I haven't heard anything about, but I'm sure Booker Dozier has one, but we get in our cars, we form a little convoy, we have candy in the back of our car, and we let them trick or treat from our car. I have had, this will be year three, and I have had an absolutely fabulous time each year, I even dress up, so if y'all are interested in seeing that, no, but, anyway, so we'll have our Eye Candy Convoy, you can donate candy if you'd like to us, but usually, we just go out and buy a bunch of our own, you should have seen the mayor the first and second year, it was fun too, but anyway, he dressed up as a, guess what, a U of M booster, how, how original. Anyway, so you're welcome to join us, um. What?
That was not a costume.
I thought it was. Anyway, um, so you're welcome to join us, if you want additional information, you can contact Eye Can, um, we're on Facebook, we're on other places, or, you know, like I said, the city's website. Also, I would like to mention, I, uh, picked up some articles for a, one of our elderly residents from Focus Hope, she didn't have any way to get there, so I went and got hers. When I got there, I had a long talk with the ladies that work there, and they're looking for elderly residents to come and get the commodities that they have. She says we need more members, so I'm letting you know, if you're sixty years of age and you meet the income requirement, and believe me, I could probably meet it, all right? So, uh, you, you need to get in touch with them and utilize some of the services that they have there. There is, uh, a flyer over there, I brought some back, there's some in the lobby, there's also some over there, the green flyer, that lets you know what the income requirements are. There's also some over there, the green flyer, that lets you know what the income requirements are. And if not, you could just call and find out if there's some other way that this can be done, but this is there for you. And she's saying not enough residents are utilizing it, so you wanna make sure to do that. Also, I would like to thank Commissioner Anderson too, for, uh, the lights as well as the sidewalk issue, because I just brought that up and he called me at my home to tell me that they were looking into doing something about it. And I was saying to myself, "If we can get the lights and the sidewalk fixed this year, y'all can't talk to us no more about it now." But thank you very much. And I also wanted to thank you and Representative Jones and, uh, Senator Kanesic and Mary and everyone who made the Searse's, um, travel party such a mon- monumental success. I was so pleased with you all all being there together and sending them off the way residents who are as dedicated as they were should be sent off. So, thank you once again. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Uh, yes, I have three things today. First of all, I'd like to say that, uh, it was a pleasure being a part of a financial fitness workshop this past Saturday, um, sponsored by the Ince Task Force, Starfish, Black Star Bank, P and C Bank, um, Green Path, and one other that I can't remember right now, the City of Ince. How about that? Uh, and it was designed to help our residents understand what it takes to become a homeowner. So, it was very successful. We had, uh, Mary, uh, Real Estate there with us and she had pictures for people to see of homes that were available in the city to give them an idea of what they would have to spend in order to get a nice home. It was just really nice. We had a very diverse group of people. It was well attended. It's only our first one. And we're trying to make sure that people understand that you can own a home in the City of Ince. Um, there will be a five K run walk on October twenty-eighth at the Ince Valley Golf Course, sponsored by the Ince Task Force and the Ince Fire Department. We hope that you have, uh, reserved your spot for the run walk. It's always a great day. This will be our number third or fourth, one of the two. It's, I think it's almost number four. Uh, so we invite you to, uh, come along with us and take some time to try to walk or run. Be great to have you out. Uh, finally, I gave a few of you this evening the Downtown Ince Desirability Survey. The City of Ince Economic Development Corporation and TIPA are interested in really sprucing up and creating a viable downtown, a walkable downtown in our city. And we decided as a strategic planning group that before anyone does anything, we need to find out what people will support. Because it doesn't make sense to put things in a downtown that people don't want or need. So, there are, will be more surveys available. If you got one tonight, please return it to me. It's very simple. All you have to do is check a lot of things and circle a lot of things so that we get an idea of where we need to move in order to spruce up our downtown. Downtown is John Daly Road to Harrison and the Antrak Railway to Colonial. That's considered our downtown area. We just wanna know what our residents and the visitors and people who work in our city would like to see. And that's it for me today.
Thank you. Councilman Chisholm?
Alright, um, I don't think I announced at the last meeting, that same day, we had visited Ince Prep. I actually took the day off to pretty much represent, uh, the City of Ince. AT&T had a backpack giveaway. And one of the executives from my employer was there, as well as State Representative Jewel Jones, his Chief of Staff, J. Dion Johnson, and myself. They gave backpacks away to the fourth graders and other needy children throughout the school, so we met with Principal Hurt. And, um, we went out, you know, for lunch and everything after that. So, I just wanted to let everyone know that last backpack giveaway had been done because we had multitudes. And it did get brought to my attention, again, how come we don't do just one big one? So, just putting that out there because everybody is hitting the same people up for the resources and having backpack giveaways all over the city or in other communities instead of just having one big one and getting it out the way. Uh, next thing, just wanted to let everybody know, because I know the AKAs might have got happy and thought I was pledging AKA, but I am just raising breast cancer awareness for our viewers and those in the audience.
No, you cannot pledge. We didn't even think that. We just like your pink tie.
Just wanted to let everybody know, I have been a family, uh, family member of persons who have passed away from breast cancer. So, I just wanted to raise awareness on that. And, please reme- Ski wee? And please remember. Please remember everyone about, uh, Ink Town Pedal Push. We are gonna be doing it every Wednesday until the weather per- uh, prohibits us. It did these past couple of, well, this past one, because it just keeps raining nonstop. Uh, six P M, Ince Park, every Wednesday. And I did send out emails to those who are on the email list, just asking for suggestions because I know that wasn't the best possible day and time for everyone, but we do have to consider that it is getting dark now, about six-thirty, seven o'clock. So, if anybody who wishes to participate, if that's not a good date for you, please see me and/or Councilwoman Mitchell. Just send the word through anybody to me and let us know so we can plan accordingly. And last but not least, I was talking, when I was over at the police department, to different officers and everything about what they're doing, ordinance, and people who work in community service. And, um, speaking with, first, I'd like to thank those officers who do contribute their time to help out with taking persons out who need to do community service and cleaning up the community as well. That's another component, as well as the, uh, Eye Can cleanup, the beautification committee, and everybody else who contributes. And I was asking, one thing you, you often hear about a lot is, they need someone to transport stuff. If the trailer is at this site and they're cleaning up over here, they need to get it from A to B. And we do have one small trailer and I found out that we do have another one, but it needs repair. So, I was just wondering what the process would be, and I was asking, how could, you know, I possibly help or facilitate to get that done? So, I just wanted to bring up that up, that we do have a second trailer that needs repair, and what we could do to get the bar rolling on that. And that's all.
Okay, Councilwoman Howard?
Yes, thank you. Um, I would like to thank Glenn Anderson and Jerome and Council for the streetlight that's on, uh, Ince Road and Cherry Hill. Um, I'm, this happened to be on the phone with Mr. Bivins at one particular time where was a deadly accident. But we have been trying and trying for, like you said, four years to even get it, but thank you. Uh, also, I noticed the streetlights on my street, the LED lights. I came down and I'm like, "Something is bright", but it was five o'clock in the morning. But then, when I noticed, um, I noticed that we did get light, so thank you for the city. Uh, next thing, I'd like to, um, tell the council or the mayor, the school that's located on Annapolis and Beach Daily, I'm not sure who owns that property, but the windows have been broken out. It looks a hot mess. And I'm not sure what we're gonna do, but we need to do something because kid, it's a school right down the street from there. So, and I would hate to see some kids go up in there. Okay, um, also too, um, this is not, as well, it's concerning the city as far as safety. I got a text yesterday in regards to, um, article on human trafficking. And the latest, um, well, it was, this one was in, uh, at Targets and on Canton, Michigan Avenue. And I would like to piggyback on that. We need to be aware of our surroundings, kids' surroundings. I know a lot of people say it's not my kid, uh, you know, I'm not gonna get involved, but we really, really need to get involved in that. Um, I was gonna ask the mayor whether or not if we can have, like, the police department or something bring some literature to speak on that. Because these people are dangerous, they hiding in parking lots, and it's more than one of them. So, you know, we just need to help our kids and just be look- on the lookout for them and help them. And we need to bring that awareness because it's not a lot of talk, not a lot of talk on human trafficking, but we are the second-largest city human trafficking. So, just want everybody to be aware and be careful. Maybe we can get a seminar or something to try to, you know, help us know the signs, so.
You provide some information?
May I?
Okay, alright, thank you.
May I interject that Alpha Kappa Alpha has that as one of its priorities?
Okay.
So, may I suggest that we'd like to work with the police department to develop, uh, a seminar for our citizens in our city? Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Proton?
Thank you. I guess I was supposed to do this announcement. Another opportunity to improve our community, come out and help clean the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex. It's gonna be Tuesday, October the twenty-fourth, at twelve P M to six P M. So, if you can come out and help out and, we had a lot of conversation about that today on helping the complex clean. So, it'd be apprec- appreciated if, uh, come out and give a li- a helping hand. I am working with the, uh, the mayor's office on the city calendar. And what we're looking for right now is if there's committees or groups that are having events, the same time of year, every year, we wanna put that on our event calendar in order so we don't have dual events going on at the same time. So, if you have an event that you do every year at the same time of year, please get with myself and the mayor's secretary that we can put that on our event calendar. Next, Ince Citizens who care, they gave a very nice luncheon over the weekend. Um, and let's know all the proceeds to that go to, uh, kids, kids for, I'm sorry, kids, cause for kids, that's what it goes to, kids, cause for kids. Uh, we try to support all the kids over in housing and other areas of the city, so. But thank all those who participated in coming out to eat, have the chicken and waffle luncheon. Let the clerk say, on November seventh, we have a school board, we have a school election. I, I encourage everyone to please go out and vote, even though they cannot collect from us. But, we want anyone to go out and vote, because people always says that we never get anything done because we, we don't go vote. So, I encourage everyone to please take opportunity in District One and go vote. Last, continue to support your community by shopping Ince. Thank you.
Alright, so real quick, we're gonna get out of here before eight-thirty. This is great. I'm not missing any of the football game tonight. The Feast grand opening is Thursday at ten-thirty A M. That's the new business right on Michigan Avenue. Um, it's, uh, ran by the Eastern Market Corporation. So, hopefully all council will get out and whoever in the public would like to come out at ten-thirty for the grand ribbon cutting. We're gonna do a ribbon cutter, ten-thirty. Also, and then once you leave there, you can go straight to lunch with the mayor, get some great food at no charge to you, um, at twelve o'clock noon at the Dozier Rec Center. Um, also, I was at the Lions game, not this weekend, last weekend, when they were home. And I'm sitting in my seat to look up at the Jumbotron, and I see Octavia Smith's picture on the Jumbotron. Uh, Western Wayne, uh, Family Health Center was, was honored at the game. I think they received a fifty thousand dollar grant. And they made Ince look good. Had a lot of our folks in the pictures, uh, people who live here, the pictures of the facility. And then, of course, they mentioned our great city. I thought that was kinda cool. I was very impressed sitting there. And lastly, just. Got season tickets. Uh, last thing I wanna announce, if anybody didn't see the news story on Officer Screw- Screw- how you pronounce?
Squarwell.
Squarwell. Did everybody see that on Channel Four?
Yes, I did.
He went over and beyond the call of duty, uh, to help out, uh, a, a young lady and her child, I think it was two people. Um, so, when you see him, give him a "That a boy" or something, and we like to acknowledge those good things happen in our community because we always complain when they, they, the press covers the negative stuff. So, there'll be a pap- uh, article in the Telegram, I think, the Detroit News ran something.
Um, the Detroit Free Press, Michigan, I should have mentioned it in three minutes, I probably. Um, Detroit News, Michigan Free Press, Michigan Headlines, as well as the Telegram and the Eagle will be making, um, posting articles. As well, and obviously, Channel Four will be too. Got a lot of really positive response, not only from the citizens on Facebook comment, but just people coming to the station, like, "I saw that on the news and it was really great."
I think we're gonna do something nice for him too, because he's our guy, this is our community, so we'll come up with something next meeting, see if he can make it next meeting, okay? And that's all I got. I'll see everybody in a couple of weeks. Motion for adjournment?
Support.
Been properly moved, supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? I want a roll call.